I think that's not gonna be nice.
Yeah.
Are we ready, Chrissy?
Yes, she said. Are we recording? Oh, we are, because we are recording. Keep forgetting what we are.
Uh, good afternoon. This is a special meeting, October seventeenth, twenty twenty five. This meeting will be streamed live on the RBC YouTube channel. And I will be calling this meeting to order at two oh four. This is a tentative agenda, which includes all information available as October fifteenth, twenty twenty five. The final tentative agenda will be hosted at the RBC Historic Courthouse, five 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 Main Street, Mecca, Colorado, and at the Rangeley Town Hall, two oh nine East Main Street, Rangeley. I would entertain a motion for line item B.
Oh, we do the pledge of allegiance, yes.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Madam Chairman, I make a motion. We approve the agenda for the special meeting October seventeenth, twenty twenty five as a writ, as written.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Uh, will you please call the rules, Sean?
Richfield?
Hi.
Overton?
Hi.
O'Hair?
Hi. Our next um, line item is under business. Line item A, we will have a discussion and possible decision on employee insurance options from C E V T Insurance.
So I think that, I guess we're gonna do discussion first, right?
Yes. All right, all my stuff. I'm funded.
Okay, and I can just email it to you as well.
Okay.
Um, if that's easier.
It's the same stuff we had when we were in the work session. Okay, I got that.
Um, so, as you know, the uh, our renewal came in, uh, twenty five percent increase for the medical insurance for twenty twenty six. Um, uh, then I have put together uh scenarios based off of our different um PPO options and a surest plan option. Um, a lot of these are based off of uh, what other entities are doing, uh, what some of the feedback was on the employee survey, um, that helped to build some of these scenarios. Um, we are currently under the PPO five plan, uh, with C C C E V T. Um, so scenario A is if we leave everything as it currently is, continue with the same PPO five plan, and the county pays a hundred percent of the employee, employee plus one and family coverages. Uh, scenario B um, is if employees were to pay uh thirty dollars a pay period or employee plus one um, and forty dollars a pay period for family coverage. Scenario C is if employees want to pay ten percent of the dependent coverage. Uh, so ten percent if they were employee plus one for that employee plus one premium, or ten percent of the family premium. Scenario D is if we were to uh, to get a surcharge for employees whose spouses are under our insurance and are also covered under their own insurance from their, their employer. Scenario E um, is a, a spousal incentive where if employees are covering their spouse who has other insurance through their employer, um, and we would give them an incentive each pay period to have their spouse covered under their own insurance. And then just, and then I went down to the PPO six, which is a uh, less expensive plan, um, but higher deductible and out of pocket. And so we did that with PPO five, six, seven, eight, and nine, and then the surest plan, um, at the bottom of the page, new page two.
I do have a question, if I could. Um, so, as you were reading across that, I hadn't picked up on this the other day. So in the scenario D, when spouses, okay, so if my husband had insurance, had the ability to get insurance through the other company through where he worked. Okay, so if he had that ability, is it just that they have that ability to get insurance through their own company, or that they are double insured through company and us?
That they are double insured.
Not just that they can move over there.
Right. Because the, we would be able to determine if a spouse had, had other coverage based off of what uh, the information C V T gathers for coordination of benefits. We may not have that information on if they have the option to, or the ability to get that insurance.
Okay.
I, I don't know that we would have that, that data.
Information. Okay. I had missed that piece the other day when we were.
And I think we need to, to say it another way, and more than just spouse, but plus one. Because like, I think about my scenario where my son is still on my insurance. Because they can, their adult children can stay on till what, twenty seven, twenty six? And so I think we need to start saying plus one, so that people know it's not just spouses, that it, it's beyond that. Does that make sense?
Yeah. Cause your adult child could also have insurance at another company option.
If, if he could, yes, yes. Yeah, yeah. Well, I mean, he is employed, but he's part time, so they don't offer it for that, so.
Okay.
Um, but I was thinking about that scenario. But I'm glad you asked that, because I was wondering that too, that question. Is it if they already had it, or if it? So you're saying if it's
They got the double insured.
Double insured, okay.
Okay. Alright, so that was my question for right now. Go ahead, Doug.
Okay, so I wanna start off by thanking the Rio Blanco County employees for what they do. We appreciate it. The county appreciates it. I appreciate it. You don't think any different. We, you are appreciated, um, in a lot of ways. But with that, we have to do something with budget. And so we're gonna have to do something. And my opinion, or my choice of, of this situation, is to leave the insurance at PPO five, which is the same deductible, the same benefits that you have right now. But I wanna start charging for employee plus one and family. So if scenario B would be employee plus one would cost thirty dollars a month for you to put your spouse or your plus one on the county insurance.
Is it thirty a period?
Yes. No, it's thirty a month.
Nine, nine, a month, okay.
Fifteen a pay.
Thank you, sorry. It is a, it is a, and I said, you did, okay.
The other one is forty dollars for the family, which would be the wife and family. Then I also want to, I think we can save a lot of money by spouses or families that are double insured. We're paying the insurance for somebody that has insurance somewhere else, and that doesn't make sense. It's costing us a couple thousand dollars a month, yes.
But on that, I know some of us have thought out jobs like this because we have medical might be a double in coverage. It helps our family and our households out.
Um, that, that may be true, but it's not fair to the other hundred and forty nine employees at the county. It, it, I, I understand what you're saying, but um, and, and you have the choice. You just, with your, if you're gonna keep your spouse that is uh, has insurance somewhere else, it's gonna cost you a hundred dollars a month. In my, that's the way I'm going. Um, but in reality, you're double insured, and what you're getting out of that is you're getting your deductible paid. But we are, the county is paying a lot more than that deductible. So it doesn't make sense for the county to be paying your deductible or nobody else's. That, that's my thing.
Madam Chair, just as kind of as a point of order. Maybe, I'm just trying to think, because I would like, we, we skipped an opportunity to have public input or, yeah, public comment, right?
Yeah.
So, um.
So, your point of order.
Yeah.
I was thinking that once we have our discussion, then we'll give the, these three minutes, the pub, public comment.
Because they, because they can ask all three.
Yes.
I'm sorry, I shouldn't, I shouldn't.
No, that's okay. So before we take a vote, we do wanna hear from people in the room. So we will give you guys that opportunity to state your case to us too after we have our discussion of what, what we're thinking about, so.
And, and just, just to finish mine up, this affects me also because my wife is on this, and she also has the insurance elsewhere, so it's gonna cost me as well. Not something that, that I am not taking lightly. Um, so I, I guess uh, that's where I'm, I'm.
Yeah, sure. So, so Doug, your thoughts was B and D?
Yes.
Okay. So as I've looked through these and thought, okay, so trying to think about it from, every employee's got something totally different. Um, I tried to think about going down to the PPO, whether it be eight or nine, so the deductible was higher. Um, but then I see the ones that, the ones that that would hit the most are those that probably have the most challenges with medical issues, and that's gonna hit them harder than it does others. No matter how we do it, it's gonna hit somebody potentially more than others. So in looking at all those options, what I'm leaning towards, again, I could be not hard, I mean, not sold a hundred percent, but I like doing scenario B that is a pretty minimal charge, and I say that cautiously, because to some people, I know that's gonna be more than minimal. Um, but then I kind of am leaning towards scenario E instead of D. And that one is paying someone two hundred dollars to take the spouse off, or the plus one.
Thank you.
Off. Um, and it saves the county, and, and there's a lot goes into that, but that saves us a hundred and fifty four thousand versus only twenty four thousand. And this is based on just a, an estimate that ten people would take advantage of this, either way, whether it's D or E, but estimating ten people would take advantage of it. It would save us a hundred and fifty four thousand, even though we pay them two hundred dollars to to just take, be sure you're only covering them on the other option. Um, so it's an incentive rather than, it's the carrot instead of the stick, I guess is the way I say that. Um, is the direction that I am leaning. Um, we, there's no guarantee somebody, they don't have to do it. You can stay as you are, but we would give you two hundred dollars to take that plus one and put it back on the insurance where they're working. That's the right way to say it.
She thinking the right way, because that's how I was looking at it too. Okay.
Except that, for instance, I'm not gonna take the hundred dollars. My wife is going to drop off the insurance. That immediately saves the county.
Uh, the, the difference between the employee plus one and the
The full premium.
Yeah.
And the single coverage.
We didn't get that added in there, did we?
We didn't.
Okay, you're right.
But you can't add that because you don't know how many people are gonna keep it, and how many people, how many people are gonna pay the hundred dollars, and how many people are not going to. Until you know that, you don't know what the saving just, I guess you could say if they all uh, dropped their coverage, you could come up with a figure. You know, ten of them.
Dang, I wish we'd have come up with, I, I forgot about that.
It should be the figures, the dollar figures off to the side should still be um, if you follow your line between employee plus, employee, employee plus one and family.
Yeah, um, so the minus a hundred and thirty six thousand
Yeah.
Would do the same thing on both of those.
Because those were calculated based off of dropping a family insurance and adding, you know, deducting from family and adding to employee plus one, or deducting from employee plus one and adding to single coverage. With those ten. They took six, six uh, employee plus one to move them to a single coverage, and four family coverages that would move them to employee plus one.
So, so no matter between E and E, it's very minimal, the difference in savings. It is gonna be, it's gonna be, you know, uh, at the most zero, and at, at the most, it'll save us twenty four thousand, and at the, no, it's actually forty eight, because it could go the other way. Because instead of paying you, you have them, so it's actually more than that, it's thirty six. The difference between the two is gonna be thirty six thousand dollars.
Okay. Not thirty six as far as the savings goes?
Yes.
That's the only difference between the two of them for us.
Yeah. So it isn't gonna save the county. You can't say that it's gonna save the county a hundred and fifty four thousand dollars. You can just say that the uh, or would you say that? There's a possibility that scenario E would cause, save the county a hundred and fifty four thousand, and scenario D would save the county a hundred and twenty roughly. Am I thinking right?
Yep, yep, I can confirm.
So, okay, so that helps with my thought process. So the bottom line is it's, our goal is to encourage moving that plus one, so they're not double covered. They can stay over on the other person's, at the other person's job. So what we're looking for is the one that would encourage people to do that the most, so it's kind of a toss up as far as what saves the county, other than however many will do it. That's the key, is how many will do it.
That's true, and your comment about the characteristic is valid. So that's
Well, and I guess my thought process is, when I went through the employee survey, and I actually pulled some data off of it, and the one thing that, that the data showed me was that employees really value their, their wages. Um, and so I guess my thought process is um, you know, I'm, I'm with both of you on the scenario B, doing, you know, with it just at that thirty, forty um, and doing it in a slow process, because eventually insurance, I mean, it's gonna go up again next year. That's, that's reality for us. And so if we just take it that slow measure right now, um, but I'm, I'm liking scenario E in the fact that one, it's an incentive, and that's what I heard, and that's what I saw in the results in the employee survey. So I guess that's what I'm leaning towards, is, I mean, because E is guaranteeing that, that the plus one will come off if we the plus one will come off if we incentivize them. Is that correct? Am I thinking of that correctly? Get the the money if they didn't remove their spouse from the insurance.
Okay.
Employee plus one. Well, in that case, that is only the the spouse that they would be removing from E.
Yeah.
Because um usually under our history, the spouse costs quite a bit. Um and they use the insurance a lot more than than a dependent, a child dependent. Um. So it has to uh. So we would you guys would have to decide whether you want it to just be for the spouses because that scenario was geared just towards spouses.
Yeah.
Because if they um uh you have an employee, their spouse works elsewhere with insurance, so they're double covered. The spouse is double covered, but they still have two or more children. Pulling the spouse off will not reduce the premium. What it will would do, the goal there would be, and it would reduce the claims on our insurance. Which is where the where our increase came.
We had we had so many, excuse me.
Oh, you're fine.
We had so many claims last year that our insurance went up dramatically in our pool. Now, one of the things that I want to talk about is I wouldn't even be considering leaving this at the same PPO five plan unless all of the departments cut their budgets a bunch. We asked them to help us do this and they did it. Or I wouldn't even be considering leaving the insurance. So I give a lot of credit to the department heads and the departments for helping us take care of this problem.
So if it's going back to the survey, so when I calculated the totals. The of the three options, higher deductible was let me make sure I'm right with this Laura, four was was the more preferred one, right?
One, one was the my first choice, two was my second choice, three was my.
Are you sure? Hmm, because I thought we.
Yeah, because the lower we need because when we were talking before, the lower the figure was the most preferred. Which was.
Okay. So if that's the case, then I was thinking backwards here because um so my totals are for higher deductible health insurance plan is a hundred and ten when you add all the numbers up. A ten percent to nineteen percent of your spouse's family health insurance premium. Goes up a little higher to one thirty-four.
And then less preferred.
Right. Okay, so then reduction in your salary is even less preferred. So yes, that's right in the right direction. So higher deductible health insurance was a little was more um was more preferred than this other way. Okay.
Today that on. The like the thirty or forty dollars a month is a lot less than the ten percent.
Yes, yes, it is. And that was the reason we went that direction instead of the other.
Possible than the lower percent dollar amount of that.
Of the ten percent.
Of the yeah, what is the what I'm asking is employee, employee plus one, employee plus family. What are those average? Whether the the grand right now?
Yeah.
Uh.
For next year.
Twenty twenty-six. Let's see here.
It's a thousand dollars and a thousand seventy-four for an employee.
Yep. And then two thousand thirteen for employee plus one and two thousand four seventy-one per family per month.
So the other thing that I want to make clear is we we do not know where we what we can do with salary stuff yet. We cannot make that decision today. But I'm not going to take it off of the table that we could do some raise on the salary. We're only talking health insurance here.
That's all we're talking today.
Yeah, I don't want it people to understand to think that it's no raise either. There may be. I can't. We just can't make that final decision today. Because we're getting closer, I'm Vicky, we're getting closer to knowing where we're at a hundred percent, but um we wanted to make this decision today so that you guys can make your decisions on your what do they call it? Your you have to make choice, open enrollment. You have to make those choices as we do by December thirtieth. I'm sorry, October thirtieth. And so we have to make this decision for you today. So I guess that's my thoughts where I'm at right now so far. So I don't know what your thoughts are, Jen, and before you want to do public comment.
I yeah, like I said earlier, it I'm 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 good with staying with PPO five, doing some scenario B. Um and and I would like to see E, but that's where I'm at. And that has to do a lot with that incentive and I heard that loud and clear in the survey, so. Where are you at?
I'm still I'm still with D, but I I understand there's three of us.
Well, then I I would like to hear from the employees that are here to say, you know, I mean, some of them have spouses um that are in that scenario. So I'd like to hear what their thoughts are, whether it would be um if it's what would help you make that decision or does either one of them make help make a decision? You're going to stay where you're at.
So if you want to do a public comment for us now before we make a final decision. Um if you can come up here and just state your name for us, please. Anybody going to come up? Chrissy is.
No, I think it would be very helpful if you said your name.
Yeah.
Chrissy Nielsen.
Thank you. You're tall.
Um so I think it would be very helpful for employees to be able to see the numbers because it was completely different than what had been presented at the work session for us, like the option. So and I didn't fully understand what you guys what the option was when there is a spouse or spouses that are both employed by the county like.
And we did not mention that actually. Um we do have uh three or four issue just off the top of my head, um where uh both spouses are employed by Rio Blanco County. And so um if I can use you as an example, um so the insurance was under Trevor and then we pay life on Chrissy. Um and in that case, if they were not married, we would pay um we would pay their insurance.
Awesome.
So I would propose that we that in that case, we would not because she can't be double covered.
Right.
Right. So we would not.
Right, we would not force one of you off.
We would not either incentivize it or we would not um uh charge for it.
I would agree with that.
Yeah, I agree.
Remain the same.
It would just remain the same. Yes, but that's a good point that yeah, that hadn't crossed my mind. I can. Yeah.
Yeah, I I just know there are several of us and so like that's that would be a big deciding factor if it changes like reach pain like the forty dollars or whatever per month. I would think.
No, thank you for bringing that up.
It doesn't really affect me a lot, but I think I would prefer to just stay at the same coverage that we had, even if we did pay the extra remote stuff.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Stacy Cool, and I just have a question. Is there a possibility where you could do just an employee and kids instead of family?
It's it's the same.
Oh, they don't offer.
They do. No, um even if you take employee plus two or more kids.
Right.
The same cost as.
To have that spouse and their weather or not.
Yeah.
They don't because the spouse is the one that. They're the expensive one, yes. That's what I'm thinking. If you had an employee and kid, we cut this one out, it would maybe be less than the twenty seventy-three or whatever that number was and obviously less than a twenty-four.
Two thousand four seventy-one. And it's it is the same. They break it down, but they don't change the the family premium.
They take another classification from the insurance company.
Yeah.
Let me if I can to make sure that I'm understanding and kind of Stacy thinking again is um okay, so you have one child, right? You have two child. How'd that happen? Let me forget. Yeah, okay. Okay, so two. So if I understand it right. If her husband was to go and be on his if if they're both double covered right now. Okay. Then if her husband went only on his employer, then that would move her from in family. Oh, it wouldn't push.
That's what I've been.
It wouldn't move her up to the family plus one because she's got family plus two.
Yeah.
Okay, sorry. I yep, we're on the same page, thinking the same thing.
Yeah, that's everything. That was if you put those spouses off, would you get a different rate?
Different premium.
Yeah.
Or would it be enough that it would decrease claims so that next year, maybe we would have an opportunity to get?
Yeah.
You're thinking just like I am. I that's what.
Sure, but if it's not going to change anything.
Yeah.
I mean, there is the the role for the incentive to have your spouse go back to their insurance. There's that incentive, but otherwise there's not a lot of incentive to take your spouse.
Other than the gap in, right. For us, the the goal would be to lower the the claims as well.
Yeah.
It it would make a difference if um like for for Doug, if he if we his wife took the other coverage and was not on the county's.
Right.
Um then we'll save that premium, right? But not if there's a family.
Not if there's two kids. If there's one kid, then it drops us down to the plus one. But if there's more than one kid, then we have to stay at the other one, I see.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
So for that. I'm going to change my mind. I have to go to the the scenario E now because if her husband is on another insurance company and we charge her a hundred dollars for that and it isn't going to change our insurance cost, what's the purpose? So I have to change my mind and go to the incentive to the two hundred, which is more of an incentive to for her to get her husband off of it to save us money.
And then to Chrissy's point, sometimes it would be helpful of like even at these meetings if we could get what you guys are looking at so we can kind of understand the numbers too.
And we were going to do that. I will say these guys were going to do that and I thought we would just there's so much here. It took us days to go through it. And if we just throw that at you guys, it's going to confuse you more than not because there is a lot and there you see how tall it's funny that print is. So I'm happy to show anybody it. I just didn't want to throw it out there that would cause more confusion than not. So maybe we can I'm happy to do that. So um so we just we could narrow it down to we share it on your screen or you so we could put it on the screen. So we could really focus in just on the our options and not all the other stuff that's there. That's where it got really confusing is all this options.
Yeah, and that's good to have conversation because that's I appreciate your question. That changed. Scenario.
Let's see. All right, you'll have to share something with me. Oh, you don't think you're a.
So low.
And then yeah. While we're waiting for her to put that out up, does you want to come? Thank you.
You have the DMs, your calendar invite. Should be able to sign in. Um maybe now, probably you should have got it.
Toby Willie. Um I guess one of the one of my concerns would be um just like we said, the insurance is going to continue to go up. Does that mean our company is going to have to start going up? Yeah, we're starting at thirty dollars. We know it. We know it. And you know, that's that would be one of your concerns. And this hits home for me because of the things that I've got to.
Charlie, you're.
No, I know them.
Get it and get it there.
Okay, go ahead. All right.
I've got two of all two that are on the insurance, just migrating medicine alone. It's five thousand dollars each per month. And then I've got something that's happened to you here is really bad. So we're using every ounce of this insurance that we possibly can. So that's where it it's hard for that was one incentive that the county and some of the other entities have always used is we not we may not be the best table. We've got really good benefits. And I hate to lose that part of it because a lot of the different departments have it's that's what keeps these guys here on some of them. I hate to see that go away.
And we hate to take them away.
Yeah.
Uh we the other alternative is not good.
So Toby, then so if we was to do the scenario E, which is the incentive one in your scenario does not give you enough incentive to pull it off.
That would help uh because depending on the 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 dollar number.
Okay.
Because we could switch all the insurance over and I'm just using this in my scenario.
Okay.
The insurance over to my wife and then we could use the money that being refunded by the county and go towards the deductible.
Okay, and and that was part of my thought process too was and and I shared that scenario with these guys is, you know, if I was married and and I'm not, but if I was married to somebody and they had other insurance at 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 the hospital and they only pay a hundred and fifty for theirs, then we would move my spouse over to the hospital and I would still be getting an extra fifty to go to my and deductible or not only deductible, but my pay and if because I still have a child. So I guess that was part of mine, huh?
That per month or is it just a one-time incentive?
The two hundreds per month.
Oh.
Yeah, so it's a reasonably good incentive, but that's where you get the option of weighing it out. Does it make sense? Or do you just leave it the way it is?
And I think a survey wouldn't hurt for the county members either say who would take advantage of this and then you would have a better solid number like.
But get it from our standpoint, we can pay you two hundred dollars a month to move that insurance over to another company that's going to take that huge loss that we're taking now. We're gladly going to do that and it's going to save the whole county money.
And and to answer your question about is is are we going to see those rates? What we're hoping is no, that if those spouses come off or plus one's not going to just call spouses. Um those plus ones come off, then we're hoping that we don't have to increase anymore. That is that's kind of our goal is let's I mean, yes, we have to do it this year because we are hit so hard, but in the future, we're really hoping not that maybe we can maintain this or however long. I mean, I that's the hope.
Yeah, and that's only one side of it. The other side of it is health insurance, health costs.
Yeah.
Uh so would option E just be so if if your decision would be so if it was option E, that's the only thing you would do or would it be option E plus that the members would have to start paying the thirty dollars a month?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We're saying B and E. Yeah, would get me. Yeah. Yeah, because every um so what you would do is in your case, it would be two hundred minus forty dollars is what your incentive would be based on. I mean.
And I would be the county would be saving fifteen hundred dollars a month in return. Because it would take about if I decide to take off the family, the county would maybe save them fifteen hundred dollars.
Um, yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Actually fifteen. Thirteen plus the thirty dollars.
Nope, let me get in the right column.
It would be right at fifteen.
A thousand three hundred and some little under fourteen.
And that's just in the media cost. The other costs are the what it costs for uh the plan. Because we had so much to pay out last year in the plan, our insurance went up. So if that if that cost came down, our insurance wouldn't go up as much next year.
It's going to go up, just not as much as it would.
Yes. We're hoping.
If we can.
Yeah. And so then the goal is also to push out more uh information to the employees about reminding them more frequently about um you know, the elective surgeries um or non-emergent surgeries. Um so we have that lantern plan that, you know, aims for the large majority of that and you know, we get that very open enrollment, that speech, but then in July, when you need to go, you know, get your knee replaced or something, you may not remember that. So we can try to.
And try to push some of those cost savings reminders through to employees a little bit more frequently.
That, that's hard, because I know some of them, you can do surgery here, have, do the lantern one endeavor, try to get. Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for coming in.
Yeah, thanks for the comment.
Neil Morland, I just have a quick question, is there any employee incentive for moving? From the family plan back down to employee plus one?
Help me, isn't that what we're doing by moving?
Well, you're focusing on the employee plus one, and I'm right now gonna do this.
So what if, what if, um, they, the employees have employee spouse and one child, if they drop their child. And just have him, employee and spouse, when they get the two hundred dollar incentive.
It's gonna, that's gonna save them ten dollars a month, because instead of paying the forty, they're gonna be thirty.
Yeah, is what that would do, but I think we need to keep the spouse is this one, because like you said, that's where they're telling us.
And that's what they, uh, they really talked about, is really. Ultimately, you don't necessarily want to get rid of the dependent children from the plan. Because usually, they are the lowest, uh, in planes. And so.
That, and, and, and I, I, uh, don't like to do anything and change any policy or any job for one person. So, uh, I would say unless it affects. A group of people, no.
Um, but I, I think I'm gonna do that anyway, because it's, uh. My, my one family member. Like a teaching position, so now she's covered on her own. Um, she wanted to stay on this insurance, and I said, no, go ahead. Well, because she didn't want to mess with it, you know.
That's part of that adulting.
I mean, if there's a, in a seventh grade, if I can help. You know, yeah. Anything, great, if it stays the same, wonderful. Just wondering.
Where'd she get adopted?
At the elementary school.
Oh, good, congratulations to her for that, yeah.
First, first day was Monday, so we'll see how.
Good, well, good. Yeah, thank you.
Anybody else? Sean, Laura, Dawn, Vicki.
I know that we're getting ready to, one of my adult children got a real job that has insurance. And hers just kicked in, so we need to get her. One's still in college, and she's a nightmare, so I can't get her off yet. She's not the not expensive one. Um, but the other one, um, they're all twenty-five now, the twins are twenty-five, so. She's been told. Grab that hoop and put it in your groove, because it's getting ready to go, so she's trying and. You know, obviously, as soon as we can get her off, we will get her off as well, and. My husband doesn't have any insurance right now, because he's a. Fishing guide, and I don't get that, so, um.
I can't figure out where the last five years went, because I was watching him play basketball not too long ago.
No, she's a big girl playing it, so, um, yeah, she.
Okay.
So it'll be, you know, it'll be this, I mean, Cassie will come off. She can come off now, she just got that, um, where her stuff kicks in just beginning of October, so she's. She can come off, so hopefully that'll help too as well, but we're not the ones that are turning in stuff.
Okay. They just give us the power to do insurance the way we think it should be. But that's not what we get to vote on today.
So, do we need a motion for this? Okay, I'm gonna make the motion that we do scenario. We stay with the, the PPO five. And we use the scenario plan. B and E, that means that the. Um, let me state that correctly, that means that the employee, that the, uh. The employee plus one pays thirty dollars a month. And then family pays forty dollars a month. For their insurance and the, uh. If you take your spouse or your family to another insurance. Not or, has to be and, it's your spouse. You would get two hundred dollars a month, or if you take your spouse and your family somewhere else, you'd get two hundred dollars a month. Did I say that correctly? Because you can't just take your spouse off and get the two hundred, because it doesn't reduce us.
So, I'm gonna question your motion, can I do that without a second?
Yes, I do make it correct.
Well, but it's, I'm confused, so just to make sure. If you move from, I guess the easiest way to say it is if you move from employee plus one to employee. Or family to employee plus one, you would get two hundred dollars a month. Okay.
No, that isn't.
It's different than what Doug is saying, because my understanding is that you, it's, you can just remove your spouse.
But it won't save the county any money.
The ten that I gave as an example. With a spouse removed would. Is based off those figures, it would move them down from an employee. Plus one to an employee only, or a family to an employee plus one, which could be an employee plus a child.
So there is a difference.
So those figures there were based on just removing a spouse.
If there's only a plus.
It wasn't, it was just as an.
Oh, just a spouse, yeah.
Just as a spouse.
Well, that doesn't make any sense, so like, let's say my son could go onto another insurance. Let's say that was possible, because right now I'm employee plus one. And my plus one, I, it's not a spouse, it's my child. If I go, I would still get the incentive, because I'm going to just employ then at that point, if I had him go to.
That's up to you guys.
So, I think to make it. Do what we want, what I think we want it to do, if, rather than saying spouse or plus one or whatever. If we were to say that it moves from, because if our goal is to move it from. Save the premiums, so if somebody went from a plus one to an employee only. We're saving ourselves. About a thousand dollars. If we have somebody that goes from family to plus one. We're saving ourselves four hundred dollars. A month. Now, that doesn't, that would allow in a, in a child, an adult child. Would not necessarily be. The one that costs us so much over here, but I, I really don't want to discriminate against that a hundred percent, because it is still saving us a thousand dollars a month.
On one scenario, on the other, it's only saving us two hundred, because you're giving them.
Right, but it's still saving us some. So that, I guess I would be okay with. The one. Oh, you guys are making my brain hurt. If I had a child and a husband. And for some reason. I chose to remove the child only.
Which is dead scenario.
Dead scenario.
We don't want that, because that's not helping us, well, but then that's helping us on the premium piece. Because that's gonna take them from the family to the plus one.
Which is around seven hundred dollar savings.
Right.
Can I ask? Um, so on this, we're just talking for option E. We're just talking spouses or, uh, employees that have double coverage.
Yes.
If an employee does not, if an employee, I have my husband on my plan, and he has no insurance and can't get the insurance, like. Do you want to explain that? I mean, do what they, you know.
That, that was for the double coverage.
Yes, strictly double coverage.
And so to make that clear, employees that their spouse is not or available, does not have. Coverage, available for coverage, can't get insurance, on instance. That they're not eligible for the two hundred dollars.
Correct, it's just so we're not double covering.
I just want to make sure we reiterate, yeah, I think it's just the double coverage.
Because we're not paying you to uninsured somebody. Insurance companies won't let you do that.
We don't want people to be uninsured.
No, and I, and I don't think the insurance company, I mean, I think you have to be sure that they are covered.
They really require a verification or what does that look like?
And we've almost supposed to fill that out.
Yeah, yeah, I think they require that you, the only way you can kick them off is if they prove that they have insurance somewhere else. I don't mean kick them off, but. They have to prove they have the insurance.
Good point. So shall I try that again?
Sure, let's see what you come up with this.
Thankfully amendment.
Well, no, here's what it was, it died for a lack of a second.
There you go.
Absolutely, we're gonna start over.
Gonna start over.
Yeah, it just, and you can say it died for a lack of a second, to be legal.
So, I'm gonna make a motion that we stay with PPO five, earned insurance. And go with option B, charge the employees thirty dollars for their spouse, forty dollars for the spouse and family. A month. And scenario E is, which is if they choose to have their spouse or. I'm sorry, their employee plus one or their family move to another coverage that is. Already being, they, they already have. Um, then we will give them two hundred dollars a month, three. They have to be insured right now. By someone else. Duplicate coverage. Is that confusing or?
I think that's okay, as long as we're just, like, if I'm clear. It's only two hundred dollars, there is any way to collect four hundred dollars here, okay, as long as we're clear, then I'll second it.
Well, can you read that back, please?
Sure, Sean. What?
I'm sorry. She was concentrating.
Would you read back what I just said?
Okay, so we have moved to keep PPO five, but use the scenario B, the thirty or the forty for family. The scenario E, and that's if they choose to move a spouse or plus one. Who has coverage, who has duplicate coverage, that they are able to get the, um, E incentive.
Except for take the spouse off of that, just say.
Just say plus.
Employee plus one or employee, family.
Okay, employee plus one or.
And you did second it?
Yes.
Okay. Any more discussion? No? Will you please call the roll, Sean?
Um, Overton?
Hi.
Grichfield?
Hi.
Oh, here.
Hi.
Motion passes, moving, and, oh, I'm sorry, what was that? Um. Yeah, I mean, the motion's already passed, but.
Right, I was just gonna see if, um, the survey results would be available to employees. And the reasoning behind that, when we had the meeting with Laura up here, there was a lot of great ideas that. Came out of that on ways to save money, and so you guys being only three people can't do everything. But my thought was if some of those results were shared, some of the other employees could see them, and perhaps start doing some of those things to. Save money or good things.
I am literally no, I don't want to do that, because there was a lot of derogatory stuff that just doesn't need to be out there.
Fair enough. The one place that was a little disappointing is a lot of the comments that were made in our sessions. Didn't get good on paper, but the good ideas, they did not follow up. And I, you know, I, you know, remember a few.
Right.
That's a good idea.
With the, with the cards and things like, like the town did, I did look into that, and some other things, but, um. Yeah.
If I may, not in charge. But I, I think you bring up a really good point, Stacy, there, how do we, how do we capture those? So there, there should be an opportunity, uh, uh, an idea box or whatever. That people could put money-saving ideas in, so that we could capture those. And then, you know, those that. It looks like could be doable or whatever, either we do it, or we share it with everybody that could do it or whatever, I think there's a. Because we don't see it.
Right.
You guys don't see it. Sometimes you right there on the floor see it somewhere different, so I think that's a really good idea. Um, and I would say not only saving money, but ways to improve effective and efficiency. Not just save money, because sometimes it takes money to do something too, so.
Could we pull out? Because there are some ideas in here, um, and one of them was an incentive. And that's kind of where we got that, what, what the incentive was off of this, so. Is there any way we can pull some of those and share those, those I, those ideas that, that are viable? Um, and share those with the employees?
That'd be all right if you read back this, the, the bad stuff. I just don't want to promote that.
The only thing else I was, and I don't, I can't imagine why an employee would not want to have their stuff shared if it was a positive thing, but I just. They didn't know it was gonna be shared, I guess.
Obviously would be the only thing.
Yeah, so I'm trying to think, I don't. And we can't tell who they were, so I guess if we do it anonymous, it won't matter.
I mean, it might be clear, and I think that would be something in Lynn's purview, just to do an employee survey on what are some money-saving ideas, ways to improve, and she could. Have that, I mean, as part of that, internal communications as well. To get those ideas, now again, you guys will be getting a lot of ideas, you know, of, you know, in strategic planning, if you, if you, um, you know. We can, you know, look at those ideas, or are there things that are gonna come up, you know, the directors make suggestions and, you know. It's just whether that, how that flow of information can get to you guys, and whether that's maybe through the bosses, or is that through. Lynn doing out some kind of employee survey, so, you know, employees could make suggestions without necessarily being identified, because that might be the situation. They might be willing, they might be wanting to bring something to the forefront that we're not seeing. And, you know, I would say that might be an option, you know, I really think that this could be an idea, but I don't want to share it because. People could look at me and say, why did you do that? Does that make sense?
Yeah, and, and I think that, I think that makes sense, just, to just start from here and get those ideas. Encourage people to get those and more ideas, I, I like that. I'm, I'm by no means, I'm an authority, I love input, so.
Right, and like I said, you guys are three, you're very busy, you can't expect, we don't expect you to do everything, but if it's shared amongst other people, then. It'd be just more of those on the ground, everything could be done.
Yeah, I like that. And, and we got, I mean, through the budget scrubs, we had a lot of that conversation with the directors, where can we save money, but it didn't come from. Their folks necessarily, I mean, it might have, who do I know, how do I know, but anyway, so yeah, good ideas, thanks, Stacy. Thank you, good job. Thank you, thank you.
Most be interested in health incentives. Like if we got with the red district or something, and you had a certain number of people. You know, say, hey, we're interested in this, to maybe get the reduced rate. You know, say, hey, we're interested in this, to maybe get the reduced rate for some. Brick center activities, that type of thing. Instead of monetary, you know, it's, it's. But this, this is gonna show itself as we go along, as people get healthier and they want. Need the insurance so much.
I know of companies that do that, but is that through the insurance helps with that somehow, or I mean, they encourage it, I don't know, we'd have to.
I would, I would. Yeah, it's a thought, but I, I want to see statistics on it.
And I'm sure people do, it's just not I do that.
They are, and they're, they're backing off of it, actually, it's, it's on a downward trend. Because of all the. Um, like, if you go and do your. Uh, all your. Annual physical and everything like that, um, some companies will give you, you know. Eight dollars back, something to do that. Or. Then you get into like the smoking is one that's always mentioned, and if you're. Or taking of things that are maybe not as. Healthy, like smoking. They're getting into the problem of uh, discrimination.
Yep, yep.
Yeah.
And they've gotten sued. And uh, so now they're kind of backing off some of those programs. So. It's a, it's a catch twenty-two, you try something like that, good and.
That's too bad.
And you get in trouble.
One nice thing we do have is the Red District is really pretty affordable if you. Take it out every month. You know, subscribe, of course now. I'm old enough that they give me an automatic discount.
I think I should have checked on that.
It's sixty-two. They usually have a advantage discount.
You're older than me then. All right, we'll quit hassle, we'll, we'll get back to order.
Thank you. All right, um, we are on business line item B.
All right. So. This is one that I had really hoped. To have ready. But my computer won't open it. Document for me, I am not ready to go through it, have you got the chance to look at it enough to know if we can take any kind of action without filling everything out?
Yeah, so the PDFs that they're talking about are standard, um, suspension and department, meaning that we can't. Um, if by accepting these funds, we have to have a statement that says we're not. Uh, doing business with any entity that's been suspended or debarred, so we're doing that, thank you, COBOS check.
Thank you.
Uh, that's. Uh, let me get back over there. And then a bar is the first one. The second one, and again, Kelly, do I'm pulling this up, do you want to tell? Yeah, we might want to share with Jim.
Yes.
Raymond, there to be.
Okay. So the, the conversation is about the emergency watershed protection program, if you recall roughly. Three weeks or a month ago.
Thank you.
We sub, yes, thank you, we. Did a letter requesting that NRCS evaluate. The damages. And then we were not on the hook. For anything until they estimated those damages, they're about seven point two million. Is what their estimate is, and that's. Um, the landfill. Um, fixing it up. Uh, the old landfill. Um. The Ryan Gulch, I'm not sure I got the right gulch. Um, the gulch that keeps washing. Down in Piant's Creek. Um, and then fixing the roads, just continual to. Keep the roads clean, clean the culverts, ditches. Roadside. And then the last one that I find, I, I had to push on him to do this, because I want to do stabilization. In places that it makes sense above that, up in the watershed. Um, and it would be on the. On the land that we can, private land in particular. Hopefully, we can coordinate with BLM two. So they're doing stabilization all in this watershed that's coming down and damaging our roads and people's fields and all that. So that's what that seven point two million dollars would be for. NRCS will pay. If we sign this agreement as the sponsor. They will pay seventy-five percent of that. So whatever, but they can't, we, they won't pay anything until we sign the agreement. So all the roadside work we're doing right now. Doesn't count, the sooner we can get this in place, the better. Um. So. They will pay seventy-five percent of that. In my opinion, seventy-five percent is better than us having to pay a hundred percent on it, right? The other piece that we did submit the letter. We approved last meeting to the state asking for a portion of that remaining twenty-five percent. That. As of the call before. We walked in here, the state is saying that that doesn't look as good today as it did probably last week even. Because of all the flood damage that's happening in southern southwestern part of the state. That, that's gonna have to be on hold a little bit, because there's. Huge things going on down there while we're here, so.
A lot of competition for money, right?
Yeah, there is. So. Even with that being said, I would say if we can get seventy-five percent. I would be happy. Um, now, for the work that we have to do. We, we would have to agree on each project, I mean, this isn't just that we're on the hook for. Twenty-five percent of seven point two million or whatever, it's each project, is my understanding, would have to be final approved and so forth. But that. So Clinton is the guy's name that's working on it. He has sent that on up through NRCS, and the people that are working on that program are still working because it's emergency, so they're essential staff. So hopefully, he will know early next week for sure. That we got that money, and once he's got that for sure, then we can sign. This paperwork that we needed to have finalized today, or I was hoping to. Um, would get us so that is the, is the, basically the agreement to move forward. That's what we're talking about. Um, I don't know whether we can actually take action on it. At this point, I'd hate to have to, when's our next board meeting?
finalized, what we're gonna need to sign and stuff?
I can answer that, so it is, it is a grant application, so that it's not the, the uh. We've not been approved for the grant or accepted the grant, it is the application.
It's just the application piece, okay, couldn't get into.
Standard SF four twenty-four form.
Application, okay.
The um, uh, statement of assurances that says all that stuff, and then a statement of department saying we're not doing that, so it is the standard. Application that you do for um, state and federal grants. Um.
Is there a due date on it, Vicki?
There is not a due date that I'm aware of. On this, so I mean, it, it's just whenever you apply, you get in the queue. I think that's the question mark, is if we get in the queue, this is. So on this piece. Um. It is. That expiration date, September thirty, twenty twenty-five, but. Oh, because of the government shutdown, maybe?
Probably.
It's in federal, right?
Yeah, it's federal.
Oh.
So it probably was.
So nothing's gonna happen anyway.
Well, it will, because it's emergency watershed protection program, and so they are working. Those in this program are working. But I, to say, to address the timeframe. I think it's a matter. Get in the queue before. Southern Colorado gets in the queue. And. My understanding is. If he gets, so if this is not the actual document, we've got to have this document in. He gets the money. Promised from DC, which is next week. If everything goes well. Then we can sign the agreement, and we can start getting reimbursed, we can't get reimbursed until.
That's right.
They sign.
Think you could do, you could direct uh, uh, Vicki. To uh, uh, to the application, get in the queue. Because you still have the ability to set whether or not you're gonna set the grant.
Yep.
Once that comes to you. So you're, you're just giving her instruction to. Um, to fill the application and get that ready to go.
And Kelly mentioned, I mean, this is from my understanding, this each. So this doesn't have anything to do with FEMA.
No.
Totally separate. If we get FEMA, which Danielle shared with us yesterday, that we are in the queue, we are like number six. So there, the last time she had checked, we were like number twelve in the stack. We've moved, as of yesterday, we've moved up to number six now, getting to number one could take a day, three days, three weeks, two years.
Mean they threw six out, or they found it six?
We have no idea.
Because, you know, they told us that it could. It could just be there for three years or something, so how did the six go away unless?
Unless some.
Or re-prioritize.
Re-prioritize.
Yeah, that could be.
That should be, I don't know. But yes, this does, just, this is just the. Um, and, and that's kind of odd, though, but in the actual application, it says expiration date nine thirty, twenty twenty-five, previous versions will not be accepted. So we might need to reach out to them and say, yes, it's still good, we just got it on.
Yeah, he did send it to us, yeah, this week, so. Yeah. So my guess is we're okay, my guess is that's a, but we'll have to verify that.
We just a typo, but I could certainly prepare that.
So would that even need to be a motion, Don? Would we just give that direction to make that happen?
Nothing admits us to the funds, is, I'll share these with Don so that he can look over them, but. The scope of work is there, certification regarding lobbying, well, lobbying, lobbying.
No lobbying.
Don't lobby.
Laura, did you, so we get, I mean, is it for? Twenty twenty-five and twenty twenty-six and twenty twenty-seven, or until the project is done?
Great question, basically two hundred and twenty-two days. So things have to happen. Yeah, now, with that being said, Clinton said he would. Very soon into the process, do an extension. Because he wants it to go through next fall. These. This time of the year, next fall.
We're gonna lose one hundred and eighty days or two hundred days.
Right. And so, but what it does do is give us time to. Get our roads cleaned, potentially. If they will pay for, you know. Stabilization, which may be seeding and stuff, the right time to do that is on the snow. So that it. Hopefully settles in, and where that ground is so sealed off. Maybe it has a chance to get in, there is no sense in seeding right now. Because it just washes off or blows off. But if they can do it on the snow. Then you have a better chance of it holding up and getting roots. I would be game for moving forward with it. Um. Worst case scenario, we would have the paperwork ready to sign. Everything done by November twenty-eighth is our regular board meeting. So be sure that's on the agenda for that. Maybe there's not a need to do it before that, if there is, we would have to deal with it up.
I mean, at the Thanksgiving?
No, October.
October.
Oh, October twenty eighth, that's for November.
That one it is?
Mm-hmm, yeah, twenty-seventh is when. May is month.
I'm just looking at when Thanksgiving is. It's twenty-seven.
So I'm just gonna be a motion, this is just gonna be to give Vicki direction.
Yes.
How do you want that worded? Vicki direction.
Is it gonna be that direction to apply for?
Emergency watershed protection. Program. EWP.
That, is that it?
Oh, I'm gonna cry, Isaac.
We will adjourn at three seventeen.